Ready to go? Okay. I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 7:03 PM on May 4, and all members of the council are present this evening. I think we'll dispense with a pledge of allegiance since my flag is downstairs, and we will go right into announcements. I will make the first announcement, which is that on our agenda, we have a discussion of Zero Seabrook. However, it's been requested by folks with attorneys involved that we postpone that discussion until our next meeting. So with, I want to bring that first and ask whether anyone on the council would like to make a motion to continue that until our next meeting.
I had just a question first, which was whether or not work had started on that property or not?
My understanding is no building permit has been issued.
Okay. I'll move to continue till, until next, or postpone or continue?
I don't think it matters. We'll call it.
Move to postpone until our June meeting.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, that was made by Counsel Brier and seconded by Counselor Hearn. Vice President Waymoth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyagen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The matter is continued to our next meeting. So if you're on here for this purpose, you're welcome to stay, but I just didn't want you to be staying if we would get to that and have to continue it. Now I ask that our town manager take us through the announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First announcement is the, I would like to wish our council president a happy birthday. I won't tell you what anniversary of his 40th birthday it is, but it is an anniversary. Happy birthday, Mike.
Thank you.
I'd also like to welcome some scouts from Troop 2 Barrington who are listening in and participating in this evening's meeting as part of their citizenship in the community. And boat and kayak stickers will be issued starting Thursday at 10:00 AM. You can download the application and put it in the Dropbox with a check, or you can do it online with a credit card. That's for kayak and boat storage at Barrington Beach and at Walker Farm. We have increased capacity at Walker Farm. We don't anticipate having anybody not be able to have a little storage space for their kayak. However, Barrington Beach fills up pretty quick. So that's Thursday at 10:00 AM that will begin. The budget hearing scheduled for May 13th and the financial town meeting scheduled for May 27th are postponed indefinitely until we can come to some kind of a resolution as to how to proceed. There's a number of options out there, but one option that was taken off the table today was our ability to meet outdoors with a larger gathering. The Department of Health will not allow that to happen. So we're looking at other alternatives, as is the governor's office and the state legislature. So I will keep everyone posted as to when we can do that, and we'll do it as soon as we possibly can. Barrington Census 2020, the census is still ongoing. I shared with the council that Barrington is number one in the state for participation at 74.7%, which is seven percentage points higher than the number two municipality, which is North Kingstown. So I think as typical, our community is coming together, and we encourage those other 20, 25.3% of our population to please. It takes five minutes online to participate in the census. We're still looking for poll workers for the 2020 elections. The presidential primary, preference primary is on Tuesday. Your application, excuse me, has to be in by Tuesday, May 19th for mail ballot, and that election will take place on Tuesday, June 2nd. And it will be the sole polling place in our community will be at Barrington High School. So we're hoping most people vote by mail, but if you, if you care to vote in person, Barrington High School would be your polling location if you're a resident of Barrington. On Monday, the Memorial Day Parade scheduled for Monday, May 25th, sponsored by the United Veterans Council, has been canceled for this year. We won't be able to hold that because of the congregation. And that's all the announcements I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I'll ask again if folks, I can see the folks who are on telephone. If you could please mute your telephone. We are getting to background. And for the scouts there, you should also take note that today, May 4th, is Rhode Island Independence Day. The colony of Rhode Island declared its independence two months before the rest of the colonies. And Rhode Island, Little Rhode Island led the way into our revolution. So that's something you should remember. The next set of items on our agenda are called the consent agenda. And these are items that will, are typically non-controversial and will enact several by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So with that said, is there anyone on the council who would like to remove any items for separate discussion? Counsel Brier?
Yes, I'd like to remove the HR report and the police report.
Anything else?
Our resignation.
May I speak?
Yes, Vice President Waymoth.
I'd like to take the, remove the planning board and the DPW report, please.
And Counselor, anything else, Vice President Waymoth?
No.
Counselor Boyagen, you wanted to remove the resignations.
Right. Thank you.
Counselor Hearn, anything else? Would anyone from the public like to remove anything from the consent agenda for separate discussion? If you'd like to be heard on this, just unmute yourself, and I will call on you. You're on the phone. You can go ahead and call out, and we will recognize you. Okay, seeing no one. Let's, let's start and move the, the rest of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of items four and seven?
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Boyagen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Waymoth. Vice President Waymoth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyagen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries unanimously. The next, the next piece is the accept resignations, and Counselor Boyagen wanted to be heard separately.
Thank you. Yeah, I just note that Mr. Bracken has asked to resign from the housing board. I recalled when we interviewed him, he was, actually, his first choice was economic development. It was one of those times where, Mike, as you say, an embarrassment of riches. He was someone from HUD who actually worked in economic development. He also have a resignation from economic development. So I think it'd be a good idea if we could reach out to Mr. Bracken, and he's so interested, he had a very impressive resume and background. And I think you could be helpful when economic development is. So it could have just been that housing.
Yes, Mary.
They are, they've moved out of town, Steve. They went to New Hampshire.
Is that what it was? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, never mind. There is a Barrington in New Hampshire.
Do I hear a motion to accept the resignations as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Vice President Waymoth? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Boyagen. Vice President Waymoth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyagen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. Next item is item seven, and Counsel Brier wanted to remove human resources, the human resources report and the police chief's report.
Yes. On the human resources.
Wasn't there a book where I had? There is so many books.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Counsel Brier. Could you folks please put your, your phones on mute? I think most of the folks who have joined through Zoom video are on mute. But if you could put yourself on mute, that would really help us because we're picking up some background noise. Thank you. Counsel Brier?
So it's two things. One is probably a quick question, and I was wondering if the two injured on duty are counted toward the 182 employees or if they are separate from?
No, they are included in the, in the total count.
And then the, the other was, I was, I was pleased to see that you've been working on minority recruitment initiatives?
Yes.
I was just hoping to hear some of what that might entail or maybe ideas going forward of, of things that might, might be happening.
Sure. I had submitted, I think, if recollection is correct, Joy Hearn had requested an update on the minority recruitment, and I did this a couple of months ago, and I will submit it to Jim to disperse to everybody. But keep in mind, since this pandemic has started, nothing has been happening.
A lot of interviews?
But one of the things that we've done is partner with schools like we, me and my interns, partner with schools like CCRI that attract a larger number of minority students to begin with, and going to the campuses and talking to the students about future employment with us.
Very good. Thank you. I look forward to the report, but that's, it's good to see.
Sure.
Then the, the other is on the police chief's report, and that is, I noticed a very significant drop year over year in total crimes. And it looks like attributable to really two categories is vandalism and traffic offenses, which I'm sure relate to the fact that for half the month, everybody had to be at home. But I didn't know if there could be anything else in the numbers that, that aren't seen. And then also wondering where in that chart I would find domestic violence incidences? Because I couldn't see a category that would delineate that.
Yeah, so Jacob, you referred to month, year over years at the month of, one, one month, right? Year over year?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, and that decline, I saw that myself, and I think that, that, like you said, that has to do with the stay-at-home orders. And as far as the statistics that you're shown come from the, what we call the National Incident Base Reporting System, and the domestic violence, I don't have it right in front of me. I was going to use my phone, but I'm on my phone for Zoom, so I got caught to go on to the clerk base, but I can't do that with the phone on Zoom. But as far as domestic violence, the amount, the actual arrests are not up month over, or year over year from month, you know, comparing this month of this year to last year, but the calls are up. So I think there's a, there's definitely, and that wouldn't be seen unless I was to include dispatch entries. Because although you're looking at hard report, actual reports taken, there are a lot of calls we are going to without the, that won't show up in the database you're referring to. I don't know if that answers everything or.
I should also point out, I should also point out that when you look at the offenses that have been investigated, they're, in terms of a domestic violence or a domestic case, that really is something that sort of sits on top of the other crime. So a simple assault can be a domestic violence, and it may show up as a simple assault. If you were to have a separate category of domestics, it would get a little confusing because it would repeat things. Domestic can even include disorderly conduct or destruction of property, that kind of thing, depending on the parties involved. So.
So not a very good statistic for a report like this because of the overlaps there?
Because of the overlap, certainly in this table. And maybe there's a way to just show, there is a category here of family offenses, nonviolent, which is in here. So we might have one that are domestic offenses or. So that's something to, to think about.
Yeah, if I can add just one other thing that Dino and I have talked about is, in a lot of these cases, you will get numerous calls from the same party. We had two this month that, one home that where there was four different calls, two almost on a, on a weekly or daily basis as these escalate. And then they, they usually resolve with a TRO and the, one of the people being removed from the house is how it ends up, until they move back.
Right. Counsel Brier, did you have any other questions on the police chief's report?
I don't know. Thank you.
Okay. Vice President Waymoth, you wanted to talk about Public Works.
I'd like to talk about planning first.
Sure.
I just thought that the public might be interested that the planning board recommended that the zoning board deny approval for a drive-through at Starbucks on County Road, and that the vote was unanimous, which is significant.
Right. That's good to know.
And on the DPW report, as I promised to do, I note that there were six trees removed from town and zero planted. I was, I, I have noticed that there are a number of seedlings planted at the new nursery just beyond the community garden. And I would assume that that should be noted in, in a further DPW report. I think that would be a positive thing. And I was wondering if we could get an accounting for the number of recycling hauls that are denied and the reasons for them being denied? I don't know if that's possible.
I think Alan's on the call on his phone, but typically it can be two reasons for the recycling being denied. It can be a bad mix, you know, a contaminated load, which our contractor does a pretty good job of it's contaminated, they won't put it on the truck. And the second reason is typically because of rain, wet, they refusing wet. So if we get a rainy day, when the recycling gets picked up, it often gets rejected.
I think those numbers, we might need to begin to just cite those numbers so that we can bring that to the attention of the public moving forward.
That's no problem. I can add that to the reports every month.
Okay.
There you are, Alan. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. That's it. Nope.
Do I hear a motion to accept the monthly department reports?
So moved.
Vice President Waymoth moves the motion. Who seconds?
Second.
Counselor Brier seconds the motion. All those, oh, I, excuse me. Vice President Waymoth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyagen?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion is passed. The next item on our agenda is the Bristol County Water Authority Monthly Report. Is Chairman Klepper on the call?
Yes, I'm here. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from any members of the council?
I have some questions that are unrelated to the Water Authority report, but I'll wait until anyone, if anyone has any questions on that.
I have no questions. Counselor Boyagen, why don't you go ahead? These are for the Bristol County Water Authority?
No, not at all. Actually, I apologize, Alan. I meant to take off the consent agenda correspondence. I noted we have correspondence from you regarding Barrington Village. But since you're giving the Water Authority report, I would wonder if we could turn our attention to that letter and just ask you, is there anything we can do to help?
The reason that that report is there, and I told the steering committee that since I was coming to the meeting anyway, I'd be happy to represent the board. The co-chairman, Laura and Pat, Pat Keefe and Laura Young, they've been working very diligently. Obviously, we've had a lot of problems with an organization that is face-to-face with COVID-19 going on. So we've had to reorient everything we've been doing. However, we've been making progress. I've been urging them for several months that they should begin to create a relationship with the town council. Not the least of which, the fact that your meetings are televised. It's yet another way to get the Barrington Village name in front of the public, in front of those people who are watching, to attract volunteers and attract, attract membership. So I may write the report, or someone else may write the report. I appreciate the fact that it's at this point in your correspondence. It's a way that we're trying to stay on your mind and keep the public on the mind so we can make this, once the COVID-19 gets resolved, we can move forward more rapidly. We're in a position right now, we've been trained, some of us are trained to accept membership, to accept volunteers, to have people vetted. We can get all of the background work accomplished that our organization requires, other than face-to-face meetings with people and providing services directly or group, group sessions. But we are moving forward at any rate, and we invite you, any of the council members, you can contact me or the number that's on our website. And the simplest thing, if anyone is interested at all, is to go to the Village Common of Rhode Island. That has the websites for the village, for the Providence Village, which has been around for five years. We're the second one coming on, and there's a few others that are beginning to start up in the state. So it's an easy way to find out exactly where we are, exactly what we're doing. And I hope to make this a month's event where we can let the council know exactly what's going on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Klepper. The next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments. And we have two vacancies on the Economic Development Commission, and we do have Carl Castell with us. Mr. Castell, thank you for joining us via Zoom. And if you could tell us, the council, a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Economic Development Commission. You're on mute, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Carroll. Appreciate it. My name's Carl Castell, and beginning of my career, I started out, graduated from Cornell Law School, went to work on Capitol Hill, and then practiced civil litigation for about 20 years. And I represented individuals in small businesses, often against large corporations. But I developed through that experience, both in the legislative experience at the beginning of my career, and then practicing law and serving on a couple of corporate boards, one profit and one, one for-profit and one nonprofit, and appreciation for how local policies and local, local law and state laws affect individuals and that kind of legal and policy analysis. And the skills that I learned doing that, I think, could be useful in this environment. I listened to the credentials of the guy that moved to New Hampshire. I will tell you, if you can get him back, he would be fantastic. And so I think that would be a pretty good, good move to make on, on your part. But, but barring that, we moved to Barrington really in pursuit of, of an opportunity for my wife with Hasbro. We fell in love with the community, and I've gotten to know some of the local business people. I've been, I coached baseball, I coached soccer, and I've been involved with a lot of services for kids. We have three children. And I think in really analyzing what we're facing in the next couple of years, the number one problem, obviously, is front and center. I think you're going to have a lot of businesses that are facing, that are already facing lack of cash flow. There was already a general tenor, as I understood it in the town, that we needed to do more for economic development. And so the speed of the response at a town level, the scale of that response, and some certainty for business owners are all going to be critical moving forward. The long-term issue that the town faces, I think its biggest challenge may be environmental. And that's why in the alternative, I did express some interest in, in that, in that commission as well. And so I would really serve wherever the council thinks they could use me, to be honest. But I, I think we've reached a vital and critical moment where communication with local business owners is going to be vital. Sometimes that communication may not be something you'd want to do in public. You want to have, develop relationships personally with people at a time when it's hard to develop those relationships. But that's going to be vital, because people don't always like to talk about the challenges that they're facing in a public forum. And that, that personal individual connection lead to more innovative solutions coming from the town level if we really start listening. Now, I'm not saying that that's lacking. I am saying that that's, that's the approach I bring to it, knowing that I don't have the institutional knowledge that others who have lived here for decades may have. I do have a skill set of analyzing how policies and law can affect individuals and businesses, and I've worked in that capacity. But I would certainly rely on, on listening and developing relationships to people in the community and business owners in particular in order to, to do the best I could to recommend to the council actions that would be of interest to that, to that community as, as we go forward.
Great. Thank you. Does, does anyone on the council have any questions for Mr. Castell? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, sir, for your willingness to serve. We'll be voting right now. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to appoint Carl Castell to the Economic Development Commission to fill an unexpired term ending May 31, 2023.
Motion made by Counsel Brier and seconded by Vice President Waymoth. Vice President Waymoth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyagen?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries, and you are appointed, sir. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, counselors. I appreciate it very much.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. This is a two-minute statement to the public. This is for folks who want to talk on a topic that's not already on the agenda. If you would like to speak, please, if you know how to do so, raise your hand through Zoom. There is that function. If you don't, and you just unmute yourself, I will take a look at who is unmuted, and I'll be able to call folks through. Then I'd ask you to state your name and address for the record. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard? I do not see anyone unmuting. So hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Next item is a letter that I was asked to, I was asked to sign with the other presidents and chairs of local communities. Although I suspect, I know which direction folks on our town council would go, I wanted to make sure that we had a vote on this before we decided which direction to go. None of us speaks for the council without a vote of some kind. None of us speaks for the council without a vote of some kind, so I wanted to make sure that was done. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, or feelings about this? I'll refer to Governor Ramon. Okay. I will.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the East Bay and Aquidnic Island Council Presidents' Letter to the Governor requesting direct aid to cities and towns from the Federal Cares Act stimulus package.
Motion's been made. Is there a second, and then we'll go to discussion?
Second.
Matter is seconded. The motion was made by Vice President Weymouth and seconded by Counselor Boyajin. And Counselor Boyajin, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question generally about, I've seen in your updates, Jim, where we kind of stand in terms of access to this aid, the purposes for which it can be used. And I wonder if you can update us, because I'm not sure, it's not that I disagree with anything in the letter, I'm just not sure that we're having any trouble getting that.
I could, let me just answer that and then let Jim fill in. There are two different kinds of aid. One is the FEMA aid, and I think that's what Jim is talking about. This is the Cares Act aid, and this is economic stimulus money as distinct from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. But if that doesn't answer your question, I'm happy to let Jim.
Yeah, as things stand right now with the Cares Act, the Treasury Department is still coming up with some guidance. And as you know, they've carved out pieces for different segments. Ripton's getting $10 million. The airport's getting a bunch of money. And then there's the PPP program that's getting money. So there's a bunch of different pots of money within that Cares Act. And Rhode Island got $1.25 billion, which is the minimum amount. They did it based on state population. At this point, the only thing that we could, as we understand it, and we're continuing to dig on this, but the only place that we could get funding out of that initial Cares Act stimulus package is for, similar to the aid that FEMA is providing us. So if we put in something to FEMA under disaster relief and FEMA turned us down, it's possible that we could apply for that money through the Cares Act and receive it. But it has to be COVID-19-related, which is what the FEMA grant is doing. I think our best chance for any aid, with the exception of direct aid for COVID-19, but to take the place of state aid, is with the fourth stimulus package, which is now being discussed on the Hill, where they're supposedly going to specifically address municipalities and aid to municipalities. So I'm not sure we're going to get an awful lot out of the initial Cares Act. I think the letter is worthwhile. It's to keep it front and center with the governor. As you noticed, Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, I enclosed that, a letter that they had sent regarding the same thing. And Andy Noda, who's the town manager and niece Greenwich, had a great op-ed in the Journal a couple of weeks ago that discussed it. So I think the letter going forward is great. I'm not sure how successful it's going to be, but it's going to keep this prominent in the governor's mind that we need their help.
Can I ask you one follow-up, Jim? And that is that the dollar amount under the Cares Act fund, so a billion and a quarter, seems, I understand that was put in there because our delegation pushed for a minimum for small states. That seems to far outstrip our anticipated expenses for COVID. Even with the emergency hospital setups and things like that, you know, the tab is, you know, I don't know what the most recent report is, but, you know, call it 150 million. And this is 10 times that. Is there any push up the chain? The governor, the congressional delegation, to say that the fourth stimulus, as much as it might do a lot of good, that, for example, the state of Rhode Island is looking probably a billion dollars too much COVID money? And what we don't necessarily need to say, we put our hands out for more money from Washington. You've already given us the money. Just let Treasury change its regulations about how it can be used. Are there discussions about this?
Yes, there are. The governor gets on about once a week with the president and all the other governors. That's why her press conference today was delayed. And those are the topics that they're discussing. I think that the COVID, the Cares Act, as it was written, is problematic in changing those rules of distribution. And I'm not really sure where the state stands as far as expenditure. Like I said, the airport got a bunch of money, Amtrak got money, Ripton got money. So what's left after the hospitals and the PPP and some of the small business initiatives? I don't, the state hasn't shared that with us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyajin?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on extending the 2019 roadway resurfacing project contract. And will Alan be telling us about this?
Yes, Alan should be on.
Okay, Alan, you're on mute.
What we're looking to do, we had Pawtucket Hot Mix as the low bidder last year. They were also the low bidder in 2018 for the past two years. They've done a great job. We authorized $1.2 million last year, 2019, for them. We have remaining about $121,000 in the contract from last year. So we're looking to take some more bond funds and continue at the unit bid prices with Pawtucket Hot Mix and get them moving hopefully very soon.
Does anyone on the council have any questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to extend the 2019 roadway resurfacing contract into 2020 with Pawtucket Hot Mix Asphalt Incorporated for an additional $750,000.
Motion made by Vice President Weymouth. Is the motion seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Boyajin. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyajin?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
And Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. The next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on proposed charter changes. Now, I know our council thought we were finished with this. I think last month, we voted on some changes, proposed changes to our charter to be put on the ballot. I was contacted by the Chair of the Barrington School Committee, and they wanted to talk about some potential changes for our charter that might help to clarify some things. In particular, they're looking at the issue of capital funding for the school side. And they wanted to get some clarification in the charter. Chairman Bay asked that I, that two members of the council be designated to meet with two members of the school committee to kind of hash out these changes to make them clearer. I don't think, we're certainly not ready to vote on anything tonight for changes because we haven't really talked specifics too much. But I'm certainly amenable to that, and I'd be happy to meet with two members. I would only suggest that Counselor Boyajin and I have already started this process in meeting with them when we had the change to our budget, based on when we discovered this. So I think it would be natural for us to continue those discussions, if that makes sense to everyone. Does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns about that?
Is there a time limit for when the final draft would be approved by the town council?
Well, the.
Now that the FTM or the, well, actually, yeah, no, Mary would know. There would be, there is a deadline.
It is, and it's for the November election would be the deadline for changes to the charter. So that, sorry, the November election is not the deadline. We have to get the ballots printed long before that. It has to get approved by the Board of Elections, the wording and so forth. Mary, what is our kind of deadline for getting something on the ballot like this? Mary DeSisto.
Mary, it looks like she's frozen. As I remember, it's in the near future. I believe June would be like the drop-dead date, one June. So we'd really have to, probably the next council meeting would be the last opportunity we would have to submit this under the ballot. And if Mary disagrees with me, she'll be sure to let me know tomorrow, and I'll advise you. But I don't think this thing can wait another couple of months. That if you're going to move forward with it, it needs to be done between now and the June 8th meeting. Oh, Mary's back on.
Yeah, I keep getting, I keep getting.
Yeah. You do.
This is, this is not good.
So.
So what was the question? I'm sorry.
The question was, how, what's the latest that we can present something to be put on the ballot for a charter change? And Jim's memory was that pretty much the June meeting would be the last meeting that we could do that for.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Counselor Breyer?
So in the interest of knowing, we likely only have one more meeting at which we'd have to have this finalized. Should we take now to discuss what sort of end we want to drive toward so that we don't arrive at next meeting on a different page?
Well, I can say that the Chair of the School Committee and in discussions with the School Committee would like clarification about the capital funding. But I think because they are stakeholders in this, it's hard for us to have a discussion without them being involved in it and understanding and being able to answer our proposals. The, I can tell you that there have been discussions around a couple of charter provisions that have to do with when the School Committee must present its budget. There's a similar one for the town council. But I don't, I don't know how we can address their concerns at this meeting without actually sort of sitting down and meeting with them.
Right, but when you sit down and meet with them, wouldn't it be helpful to know what Vice President Weymouth, myself, and Counselor Hearn would like to see? So that you don't draft something in partnership with the School Committee that then isn't something the council would pass? You see, I'm saying we have one meeting to approve it. Should we take now as preliminary discussion so that we're more likely to approve it?
You could certainly, I guess, in the absence of you saying, "I wouldn't make a single change to the charter", it's hard to sort of hit where they're going. Are you saying you'd like to talk about whether you're generally favorable to the idea of clarifying the charter? Why don't you tell me what you're thinking?
Yeah, I support changing the charter to make it clear that the schools' funding requests, when they present their budget to the COA, that it include all school expenditures, including the capital, but that the capital request also be separated in some way so it can be reviewed explicitly.
Okay. Does anyone else? Yes, Vice President Weymouth?
Who drafted the the changes that are on the managers?
That was our manager. That was Jim Cunha, just drafted those because he was attempting to understand what the School Committee, he thought this would help to clarify things. So that was not presented by the School Committee.
No, and I should say that when I did draft that, I ran it by the solicitor, and he thought it accomplished what it needed to do to clarify where the capital, school capital belonged. I didn't think it was required a whole lot of detail, so it's pretty simplistic changes. But I think it clarifies the issue. I'm not sure it meets a school committee's criteria, but I think if you read that the way it's written now with those few additions to it, it's clear that the School Committee's capital budget remains on the School Committee side for submission.
Right, and I did pass that along to the School Committee, and I think that they were looking for additional clarification and additional changes. I don't want to speak for them, but I did show them that, and they didn't immediately say, "That's exactly what we're looking for." So I think they want to have further discussion.
I would, I would just like to say that I, I would, I accept that at least that far into the discussion. I would agree to that, those changes.
Counselor Hearn, did you want to be heard on this?
I would just agree with Counselor Weymouth. I'm fine with these changes. I mean, as a good starting point. I mean, I understand Counselor Breyer's recommendation to see all of the capital expenses and have them able to be reviewed separately, so that's a good suggestion as well.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Mike Gercillo, do we need to vote on a motion to do anything? Or can we just meet, Counselor Boyajin and I meet with two members of the School Committee to discuss this and try and come up with something substantive for next meeting?
I don't think you need a separate vote. I think it's fine if two members meet with them. You've advised the council, you've had some feedback. I think you're all set at this point.
Great, okay. So we will put this on our agenda for next month and come back to it after we've had some substantive discussions. Then the next item on the agenda was the Discuss an Act on Zero Seabrook Court. But as I mentioned at the outset of the meeting, there'd been some requests that we continue this. So we made a motion to postpone this discussion to our next, our June meeting. Next item on the agenda is Item 20, Discuss an Act on the Revaluation Contract. This is something that we entered into some time ago. And we are just trying to essentially adopt what a prior school, town council has done. Does anyone have any questions about this?
Mr. President, if I could just have a moment. So just to give you a little bit of background, the town council in 2013 approved the nine-year, three-cycle revaluation contract with Northeast. It began in 2014 with a full reevaluation, and then '17 with a statistical, and then 2020 with a statistical. The rates for all of those, for those three cycles, including this year's, was in that original contract. In '17, we did not bring it to the council. We just let the contract run through as it had been written. This year, we discovered that there is a back-out clause. If we were concerned about the performance of the Northeast and we wanted to reevaluate the contract, we could back out and, you know, rebid the contract. Based on their performance and my discussions with Mike Minardi, we feel that Northeast, they're one of two in town, in the state, to do it. But their performance has been good. They're holding to the $142,000 that was written into the 2013 contract. But the solicitor recommended, since the council does have the ability to back out of the contract if they so choose, that it would be best if we brought it forward to you for your concurrence or the continuation. Mike, did I hit that right?
That's right. That's exactly right. We need to be on record, because this is the third option in the contract.
Okay. Would anyone on the council like to be heard on this? Counselor Breyer?
So I wondered first, because that rate was set seven years ago, and we're entering now a financial crisis. If there was discussion about reducing the rate, it's a lot of money that was set a long time ago, and I'm just wondering if that conversation took place.
I don't believe so. Uh, Mike Minardi can jump in here, but I, I think we were just following along with the contract as it was written and not looking to go back in and renegotiate it. Um, Mike, do you have anything?
No, I was just going to say that their scope of duties has been reduced because they're not going to do interior inspections on the sold properties, but I have plenty of other things that they can do to replace that amount of work.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm.
The other was, um, during, you know, our, our many discussions about the, um, change in tax assessment policy over the last year. It was, um, brought up and, and made rather clear that there are many homes shortly after the last townwide statistical update that were substantially off the prices at which they sold and then many that were not. And so I was just wondering what, what metric is used to evaluate their performance to know that they have performed well? When we just had a, a big example of where they might not have.
I don't know if you were talking to me, but I just got kicked out of the meeting and I'm back in again.
Uh, the question, Mike Minardi, was, um, how do we evaluate their performance? Uh, given that in the, uh, past year, we've had discussions and it appears that there were a number of homes that were, um, significantly off of the amounts that they sold for. The assessed values were sub- substantially different on some number of homes. How do you evaluate their performance?
So we do a lot of statistical testing all through the revaluation and at the very end, we have certain parameters that have to be within, uh, national standards and we're always within those standards. The revaluation is good for one day, December 31st of the year that we do the revaluation. And then anything that happens after that, uh, is part of the next revaluation or the next year's value. Um, and we go through this every year. We, we have, uh, extremes at both ends, things that sell for a lot less and things that sell for a lot more. And that's just the nature of real estate.
Okay. Counsel Breyer, anything else?
No.
Okay. Would anyone else from the council like to be heard? Okay, seeing none, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve continuation of the revaluation contract with Northeast Revaluation Group LLC.
Vice President Waymoth makes the motion. Is there a second? Uh.
I'll second it.
Counselor Hearn makes the second on that. Uh, motion has been made and seconded. Vice President Waymoth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Boyagen.
I'm sorry, I just have one question for discussion. Um, I noticed that, uh, we received an email today that this is, this work is beginning now. Is that correct?
They're scheduled to begin tomorrow.
Okay. So that even if we had reservations, there's really functionally nothing we can do under the circumstances. Can we get a revale in time other than to retain Northeast? Is that correct?
No, we could put it out to bid. There's only two companies really that bid on it, Northeast and Vision.
Right. And we've had. Vision. We.
Right.
Okay, aye.
Uh, Counsel Boyagen votes aye. Uh, Counsel Breyer?
Nay.
Counsel Breyer votes nay. Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn votes aye and I also vote aye. The motion carries four to one with Counsel Breyer in opposition. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on resolutions. And the resolution, uh, for this, uh, this month is Supporting Pride Month. And, uh, Counselor Breyer, you proposed this. Do you want to say a few words about it?
Yes, um, I decided to propose this resolution, um, last year. Um, last June, I tried to organize a flag raising ceremony, but it was late in the month and I was still kind of learning how, um, how to be a counselor and, and that I can't just kind of go ahead and put on things like that on behalf of the town. Um, and so this year I wanted to be sure to go about it the right way. So in advance, um, I reached out to, uh, a group of folks, um, some within my network, some beyond. Um, you know, people who know people, um, that wanted to, um, come together and, and put together a resolution to recognize the LGBTQIA+ community in town, uh, in a way to foster a more inclusive and welcoming environment for that community. And over the last, um, week or so, we, we put the finishing touches on this resolution and, um, happy to discuss it and look forward to, to passing it, making it part of our town.
Does anyone on the council have any questions or comments or concerns about this?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Anyone else? I, I will point out, um, just one, a couple of things. Um. Just the, it's really, this is something Mary could take care of. The, the therefore clause should, we should delete the now before therefore and just put now therefore as a single clause. Just traditional to have it that way rather than in the, in the last where ads clause.
Okay.
Other than that, um, oh, and, and the question is whether we all want to sign it. I'm happy to sign it, but we can all sign it as well. We can put our own signatures on it, uh, unless we just want to have, uh, the president sign it.
I'd like to all sign it because I, I would like to sign it.
Okay. So, uh.
Jim had, Jim has something to.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to advise you is, you know, it says that we'll conduct a flag raising ceremony in June. Um, the gathering is currently restricted to five. As of Saturday, the ninth, it will probably be 10. And if we follow along with the governor's intended schedule, we'll go to phase three, two weeks thereafter. So we could have up to 25 people at the flag raising gathering. So we're going to have to limit the number, but the later you schedule it in June, the more likely you are going to be able to have a bigger crowd, which will probably max out at 25 at best.
Yeah, the.
We'll raise the flag at the beginning of the month anyway without a, without the ceremony, right?
So the thought was that the, the flag would be up each day during the month and then there would be a day with the, the ceremonial event. And when it was discussed with this group, we, we knew with, uh, physical distancing regulations and whatever else is going on. It's, it's more going to be the few people who are there doing it and then recorded or televised or some, you know, something of that nature online.
Um, so I just, I want to be clear that this is a, a resolution to the extent things change and, uh, the emergency declaration, which is an ordinance that we will get to, uh, would supersede this resolution. So in other words, as important as this is, we won't risk public safety if.
Sure.
If it comes to that. Um.
Can I, can I just ask one question about this? And, um, I don't know if you know offhand, Jim, but I overlooked initially that it said we will fly, uh, the flag for the entire month of June. And I only know that there are events because you reminded us about Armenian genocide remembrance day. Occasionally we fly flags for other events. Do you know if there's anything for June?
I don't believe there are any other events. The only thing I'd have to check on is the protocol for the POW MIA flag and whether we can take that down and replace it with the gay pride flag or whether we fly the gay pride, pride flag below that. I'm not sure what the protocols are, but one way or another, we'll get the flag up.
Yeah, I mean, if we could just make sure that we don't have conflicts and straighten it all out and do it appropriately, that's, okay. Great, thank you.
Counsel Breyer, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I, let me just look for the language. Oh, uh, I move to approve the Barrington Town Council Pride Month as presented. Actually, as, as amended with the movable, moving the word now.
Great. Uh, motion's been made by Counsel Breyer. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Counselor Hearn seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Counsel, uh, Vice President Waymoth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Boyagen?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries unanimously. Uh, next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on ordinances. And the first one is to introduce ordinance 2020-9, an ordinance amendment to chapter 63, alcoholic beverages. This is increasing our BVL licenses from three, where it currently stands, to four. We have to introduce these ordinances first and then we can vote on them at our next, uh, meeting. Um, Vice President Waymoth, are you prepared to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to introduce 2020-9, an ordinance amendment to chapter 63, alcoholic beverages, BVL three to four, and set the public hearing for June 8th, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice President Waymoth and seconded by Counsel Boyagen. Any further discussion? Counsel, uh, Vice President Waymoth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Boyagen?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Uh, this is a public hearing. The first one is 2020-6, an ordinance amendment to chapter 169 taxation. I am opening the public hearing on this. Um. Uh, Jim, who, who's going to tell us a little about this, just so we have an introduction for, for folks?
Uh, I, I believe that should be Mike Minardi. Okay, um, well, basically, um, what this does is, and I'm trying to find it from last month, but it's, um, it, it moves the ordinance in alignment with state law as far as the, uh, the filing time, and I believe it's 30 days. But our charter was out of sync with what state law required.
Right, and now this ties it specifically to the state law rather than putting in its own deadline. It's just a reference out to that.
Correct.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? If you would, please unmute your microphone and I will call on you. Or if you are on the telephone, you can just say that you'd like to be heard. Seeing no one from the public wanting to be heard during this public hearing, I am closing the public hearing. Anyone from the council want to be heard on this? Does anyone want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to adopt 2020-6, an ordinance amendment to chapter 169 taxation as presented.
Second.
The motion made by Vice President Waymoth and seconded by Counsel Boyagen. Vice President Waymoth?
Aye.
Counsel Boyagen?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion passes, the ordinance passes. The next item is to renew our declaration of emergency. Uh, as folks know, uh, may know, we declared a state of emergency as a town. Uh, we granted to the town manager certain extraordinary and temporary, um, powers of the council. And we have renewed that motion, uh, each month, uh, and hope that we don't have to continue to renew it for too much longer. Um, would anyone like to be, anyone, I'm opening the public hearing on this. Would anyone from the public like to be heard? If you would, please unmute your microphone and I will call on you. Or if I'm not calling on you and you are on the phone, you can just let me know you'd like to be heard. Okay. Seeing no one from the public who would like to be heard on this, I'm closing the public hearing. Anyone from the council want to be heard? Counsel Breyer?
Yep, um, I think we've handled the pandemic very well in town and I give a lot of credit to the town manager for how he managed us through the crisis. Um, I was the first recalling to, to vest more authority in him to get us through the emergency portion. And I'm grateful for, um, how he's kind of managed things at the helm. I think this recovery is going to be long and I think it's going to be about ad- adapting the physical distancing regulations into our everyday life and into the new normal. And I think, uh, it makes it no longer in, uh, makes them no longer emergency actions for the most part. So I'd, I'd like to look at how we might set up the declaration to allow for the council to set new ordinances in this area, even if they have expirations, to return the town manager more to the function of execution and enforcement rather than a legislative focus.
Okay, and is that something you'd like to do tonight?
Um, I don't have specific language because I'm not familiar with emergency declarations, but it's something I would want to start doing, um, much sooner than next month because we'll have questions of the opening of the beach and how fields will be used or not used and things like that that I think need to be larger discussions. Um, because I, I think it, it needs to take into discussion more stakeholders than you would normally have when you have a single person making those, uh, calls.
Okay. Anyone else on the council? Uh, my own view is that this is a developing situation. And because it's a developing situation and everything that, we have models, we have plans to open up on the ninth from, going from five to 10. But these things can change. And every day, the members of the council get a report on the number of people in the state of Rhode Island who've died and the number of people in the town who tested positive for this illness. I don't believe our council is set up to react to these things as quickly as the town manager. Uh, I believe that under the circumstances, it's still worthwhile to continue this state of emergency. So that's really what it is. And to allow our town manager to make those adjustments on the fly. If in the next few days, God forbid, we see a lot more cases going up, that changes things. I think by the time we get to the next month's meeting, we may be ready for that. But I would respectfully disagree that we should, uh, end that tonight or, or in the next 30 days. I think we're still in that state of emergency and I think we will be.
So, so do you think we, the council shouldn't discuss, um, whether or not the beach opens and if so, to residents only or to others? And what to happen with the FTM? Because tho- those are things that very likely could be coming up in the next month. And I, I would like to, to have a public discussion about how those are going to unfold.
Well, we did actually have a public discussion because we are the ones who voted to, um, postpone the FTM. In terms of the beach, um, I'm not sure when it would be scheduled to open anyway. I thought, I thought it would be Memorial Day, the end of this month. Um, and if that's the case, another week until June wouldn't be a terrible thing. And having us vote on it at that time, I just think during this period, and by the way, I, I, I don't have any problem with having a discussion about it. It's just that I think us predicting right now what the death count's going to be or what the, the num- whether the number of sicknesses go up, it's not worth the risk for us to do that uh, when the town manager can react more, um, uh, fluidly to the changing situation. I think by the time we get to June, I'm hopeful that things will be, um, I think by the time we get to June, I'm hopeful that things will be changing and we'll be able to, to remove that state of emergency or suspend the powers that we gave, and then we can vote on things. But I don't think we're there yet. That's, that's my view. I'm certainly open to. Counselor Hearn, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, so one suggestion would be to have it end at our next meeting. It goes to June 12th. When's our next meeting? June 8th?
6th, June 8th, that's correct.
June 8th. And so then we can really have a discussion about either extent, you know, kind of at the meeting without this going past that meeting.
We, yes, we could certainly do that, and we can amend the, the ordinance to do so. The, the reason that it goes past that is what happens if, at the last minute, the meeting is canceled? One of the, that's the only reason, because we could have voted tonight to, to suspend that. And, and my feeling is we probably should have it go past that because we haven't been Zoom bombed, thankfully. But if we are and we get canceled this meeting, we can't recall it once we get the offending party off. Under the Meeting Act guidance, we have to give notice in a few days and so on, so. I think we can make a decision at our next meeting if that's the, and I think that's what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would behoove us to just have a bigger, I think by June, I think we'll see a different, hopefully, fingers crossed, a different landscape. And I think it would behoove us to just take a bigger discussion on this action. And it might be that we vote to continue, you know, according to what's going down at that point. But I think that it would be good to have a discussion of, you know, kind of either pulling pieces out of the, you know, state of emergency, making it kind of reflect what's going on then.
Anyone else? Counselor Breyer?
I, I was not suggesting removing the declaration of emergency. I was actually discussing how to set up the declaration of emergency. And I think you might have misunderstood what I was saying and reframed it incorrectly. I'm not trying to guess what death counts are going to be. I'm trying to ensure that we have a voice in policy that is controlling the life of people in town where we have a very serious and very concerning situation. But the, the emergency of it, the urgency of it has changed quite a bit. We've also been, for the last three or four weeks, almost in lockstep with all of the state regulations. And so I think it is, it is, it is not irresponsible to think that we could set this up in a way that would align us with the state regulations and give us control as a council to set policy for our town.
Okay.
Which is what I was trying to do.
I believe that we have control as a council, and we certainly can. And as a council, we, we initially designated Jim to be able to react more quickly. I would disagree with you that the urgency has changed. I think we're becoming accustomed to the sense of urgency. But there, we are still in a very urgent situation. In my job, I, part of my job is to represent five nursing homes. And they are flat out and staffing problems and people sick all over the place. We're not out of the woods, and I think for us to manage this in such a fluid time, and I think it is still fluid, is harder. That's just where I disagree with you. I don't think that we are giving up our role as policymakers. I just don't think we should be meeting every night to vote on, and I don't mean to, it would be, based on what the numbers are from the previous day, decisions are made on a day-to-day basis. And I don't think that we are ready to do that.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone else on the council want to be heard? Counselor Boyajin?
I just had a question. Jim, I think you've done an outstanding job so far. And I'll tell you, declaring this emergency and handing over this kind of authority was one thing. I didn't have any hesitation because of you. It's just one of those things where you say, you know, I never thought we'd be asked to do this. Do you see anything in particular coming the next week, two weeks, three weeks? Where do you see things going on, you know, Barrington specific, separate and apart from?
Yeah, besides what the governor's doing and its impact on our community, there may be situations where the governor does something that we would like to keep stricter. You know, Phase 1 is pretty, pretty lenient in the case it's doubling the gathering to 10 if it goes as planned. And at some point during Phase 1, they're going to open restaurants to outdoor dining. Which, you know, in, what is outdoor dining? They have to define that, first of all, as in a tent? Is it, you know, outdoors completely? And so there's a lot of, there's, I think that we need the agility to be able to respond to the governor, what the governor does, and in some cases, we may decide that that doesn't work for us as well as we'd like to, and we'd like to make it stricter. Certainly, every decision I've made, I've made with discussions with one or two counselors. Or I've asked, put out an email and asked you to contact me if you have any concerns about it. I would do the same thing with this. I think the beach is going to be problematic. DEM is focused on town beaches that align with the state beaches and coordinating those activities. In our case, I think the opening and closing of our beach is going to be our decision as to how we should do that. Some people are doing only ambulatory use of the beaches, not letting people put down blankets. I think that's problematic in enforcement. And I also think we have the luxury in Barrington of having a beach that goes east and west for a long distance, and social distancing for sunbathers does not become a problem like it might in other communities. Where they're talking about putting out, putting out demarcations as to where people can sunbathe to make sure they get the, but as you know, the tide changes, so does the size of a lot of beaches. We don't have quite that same problem. So I think our beach reopening is not going to be as problematic as some of the other communities that bought a state beaches. So I think we need the flexibility to be able to react to what fits Barrington best, not necessarily what fits the state as, as a whole best.
Thank you very much.
Vice President Weymouth?
At our last meeting, you asked for our, our input on allowing walkers to access places like Haynes Park and not the beach per se, but, and not parking, not opening parking, but have, have you come to any conclusions about that?
Well, I think the way we're going right now is that, you know, Haynes Park will be opened up on Saturday, assuming you go to Phase 1. It's one of the ones listed in the DEM opening list. They're not opening all their parks. Interesting, they're not opening Colt State Park, but they're opening Haynes. So, you know, my feeling is that especially with the bike path, the way it is, that we should pretty much open up our recreation fields, our, our public lands to walkers and hikers. I think the social distancing and the, and the gathering of 10 or less is, is a safeguard against anything too unduly happening. And so my thoughts going into this weekend, and there'll have to be a new executive order put out later this week, is to open up our parks and recreation areas within the regulations set by the governor who include Barrington Beach.
It's my understanding that the parking for these opened up areas will be significantly reduced. How will that be managed at both the beach and at Haynes Park? And who would enforce that at Haynes Park?
Haynes Park would be DEM, although we lease it, so we do have jurisdictional, and they've asked us to help with their enforcement guidelines. Unlike, when they're talking about parking restrictions at the beach, they're talking about Wheeler Beach and Scavo Beach where the capacity of the parking lot can, can exceed the capacity of the beach at high tide. We don't have that problem at Barrington Beach. As you know, our, our standard has been that once the beach parking lot fills up, we open it, we close the beach to out-of-town residents, and then we park people on the grass. And typically, not many people park on the grass before parking spots start opening up. There aren't that many parking spots on the beach. Trying to enforce an every other parking space rule would become problematic. And quite frankly, I don't, as long as people keep the social distance, chances are you're not going to be getting in and out of a car at the same time with the car next to you. And if you are, you should just simply wait till that next person gets out. So I don't think we have the same capacity issues with parking exceeding our beach capacity as some other places do. So my feeling is that Barrington Beach is defined just the way it is as long as people social distance once they're on the beach.
And what about the tennis courts and the pickleball courts?
The tennis courts, we, we would open those up to singles games, not doubles games, because doubles can put you within social distancing. Pickleball, I need to do a little more research. The pickleballs tell me they don't ever get within six feet of each other. My personal observation has been that that's not true. So we'd have to figure out what we're going to do with pickleball. We've got a high pickleball contingent that wants us to open it up, and I'd like to if we can figure out how to make them socially distanced appropriately.
I have to say that I have had comments made by those of us who walk by the country club and notice that there are six guys at a, at a tee, teeing off. And, you know, why, why, why that? Why is that allowed? And, you know, we aren't allowed to access the tennis courts and play singles or, or even doubles. I mean, they're, the space between doubles is greater than the space between the golfers that, that neighbors of mine and that I have observed.
So I, I go by around a country club fairly frequently just to check it out. I did on Saturday afternoon, and I noticed that the pins were back in the holes, which was one of the agreements we had, that we didn't want people handling the pins. And so I walk in and talk to the manager, and as it turns out, most of the clubs in the state now have a new pin where there's a, there's a little hook that comes out of the cup. So you never touch the pin. You take your putter and you pull up on the pin and the ball pops out of the cup. So you never have to touch the pin. So it's actually safer than what they had before. I, I talked about social distancing. He said that they are extremely strict on it, that they have removed people from the course from, for not doing it correctly, and they're as observant as they can be. When I've been driving down Nait, I have not noticed anyone that's been within six feet of another golfer. That's my personal observation. But I did reinforce with him when I spoke to him on Saturday that, you know, they needed to follow the rules, and he seemed to be well on top of it. The Rhode Island Golf Association is, is setting out recommendations and rules, and they're following them, and they all seem to be within the rules that we've set out for them from the beginning.
This particular hole was where the bike path passes across Middle Highway. It's very far, it's about as far away from the clubhouse and Nait as you can get. And I can tell you, they weren't six feet apart from one another.
I will call the manager tomorrow morning and have a conversation with him about that. And that one of our town councils actually observed it and asked them to, to do a little better job of enforcing the rule, especially when they get out of, out of view of the clubhouse.
Thank you.
Counselor Boyajin?
One last question. I haven't driven over there to check, but I know that the state has had some guidance come out, DEM, about boat ramps, and it occurs to me, we have two municipal boat ramps, right? We have Police Cove and Walker Farm. Do we have any guidance posted there as to how to deal with the situation? I saw something that the Marine Trades Association had put out, and then I saw something else from DEM, and maybe we should look into, as the boating season heats up.
Yeah, the boat ramps are all closed right now. I suspect that they're going to be opened up by the state, the state boat ramps, and I, I would open up ours. Their biggest concern has been boaters coming in from out of state. And that's what the trades union and some of the other folks have been talking about. Now, our Police Cove, you know, the parking lot's been closed, so no one's been launching at Walker Farm. At Police Cove, there are three co-augusts that, that actually work out of Police Cove. So we have their license plates, and the police know, you know, note that they have permission to move the barrier, go in, park their vehicle, close the barrier, and then, you know, go on with their, we didn't want to put them out of a job. But they launched their boats from there, or they had their boats on moorings there. But I, I'll have to check on it, but I, I believe the DEM intends to open up the boat ramps. And as long as people, once again, as long as they physically distance, I don't think boat ramps are an issue.
Thanks.
Counselor Breyer, did you want to make a different motion than this motion?
If, if there's a way to include any change to standard policy around the beach and around the FTM being added to this declaration, that would make me happy. I don't know exactly what those words would be. But, you know, when, when we discussed last month the FTM, and it, it was postponing it with the assumption that it would happen later, and it included the instruction to have the town manager schedule it later and publicize it. But based on the information we have from the governor now, an FTM will not happen within a year. And so I, I think we need to make sure that the council's involved in setting however the, the town's budget will be adopted or not adopted. But whatever that decision is, I think should be clear that we haven't abdicated that responsibility in any way, and I think it's, it's good to codify that.
Regarding, I think I've updated you on the FTM's, the, you know, the governor, the governor is unwilling and doesn't, her legal team doesn't feel it's constitutional for her to give an executive order delegating the powers of the FTM to the town council. This legislature is looking at it. There's some question, questionable about whether that's constitutional. And DOH is not going to let us gather with more than whatever the recommendation is. And the governor said maybe by August we'll have 100. Unless we do multiple venues, which could possibly happen in, in August, if we can put it together logistically, you're correct, we're going to go into next year, and we're going to need some kind of legislative relief. And the league has asked for it to be enabling legislation to allow us to carry the tax levy into the next year and with that budget, and then at a point where we can do an FTM, you know, you could roll it back retroactively, or I believe that you could just have it going forward from that point on. But right now, we're not in a position to make any decisions about an FTM until we get some kind of legislative relief.
I would only point out that we reserved the powers specifically out of this, financial and legislative, in both the setting of a budget or the setting of some other mechanism to approve a budget or going to be financial or legislative.
So that should, does that address your concern, Counselor Breyer?
Yeah, I guess. I've, I've actually, I was, I was considering that before because I, when, when you made that amendment to the initial declaration, it left me kind of wondering, well, then what, what powers did we vest? I mean, that's kind of the, the bulk of it, that and appointments. And so I figured if, if there were powers, absent those, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what they would be. I guess that's part of the conversation I was looking to have is a, a better codification of what a, a better codification of what powers we have vested in the town manager aside from um, financial and legislative.
That's the conversation we're having now. We can have that for as long as you'd like. I, my, um, I mean, certainly licensing, and that was part of the first thing, is neither legislative or uh financial. And the licenses were suspended for various things at various times um, and modified for uh those purposes.
So what about, what about the, the beach and whether or not to sell guest passes or even the, the town passes? Parking passes? Any change to that from standard operating procedure?
That's kind of a license. Um, that, that is a license in the sense that it's a license to use that area or at least the parking of that area. Um, so yes, that would be with the manager. And so you're looking for some language that would exclude that ability? Or, or I'm sorry, I don't want to mistake. What are you hoping for?
I, that if there's going to be a change such as not selling guest passes to out of town residents, um, because I know that that's something that somebody sent a message to the council about that. There's a discussion of people um that would like to see that and other people who don't want to see that. And I, I'd like to have a discussion specific, not necessarily now, but to have a discussion about that before the decision is made.
Well, we can have it now because this is part of the uh, unless someone disagrees, unless Mike or Silla, unless you disagree with me, I think the opening of the beach and the, those things are uh, powers that we have granted to the uh manager. So I think it's reasonable to have this discussion now. Is that fair?
This is Mike or Silla, you absolutely can have the discussion now. The other thing you could do is simply, I agree that the F T M is covered under financial. You could um add one more exemption um with regard to Barrington Beach in that second to last paragraph. So that it would have to be the council who would make all decisions with regard to the opening and who passes were sold to, et cetera.
Well, um, do we? I, I don't, I'm not sure I want to wait until June eighth to decide about opening the beach. Uh, and I don't think that's your concern. Is that, am I understanding it correctly, Counselor Breyer?
Yeah, it would be more how, how to open it. Um, I don't, I don't want to delay the opening any longer than safety would have us delay it. But, and, and I certainly wouldn't want to take away the agility to be, for, for the town manager to be able to close it if there is a resurgence or anything of that nature. It's, it's more in changes that, that have big impacts on people where um where it's a judgment call that's, that's not necessarily an urgency thing, but uh an evaluation of how we want our community to look going forward. And that would be things like guest passes versus not, not guest passes. Um, you know, restricting it to Barrington residents only.
So if I, can I address the beach passing? This kind of comes up every year and the council decided several years ago to open it up, daily passes for residents. It brings, uh, for non-residents, excuse me. And it brings in quite a bit of revenue. It's $10 a car. Um, there are people in Barrington that get upset because they have to park their car on the grass and walk across that huge parking lot to the beach. Quite frankly, that falls on deaf ears. I mean, managing the beach, if you, if you, if you don't think Michelle and I can manage a beach, then you probably need to get a new rec director and a new town manager. I mean, the beach has never, ever been a problem. No resident has ever been turned away from the beach with a seasonal pass. Once the parking lot fills up, we close the beach for the day to all out of town residents and open up the overflow parking. And no resident has ever in the three, four years I've been here, has ever been turned away. Yet every year, people will come up and say, and I don't know whether it's because they want it to be their exclusive beach or not, but they will say, we should, we should just make it for Barrington people. Well, the fact is Barrington residents are not being um in any way harmed by us selling guest beach passes. As a matter of fact, they're being supported because of the revenue that it brings in. Um, but the, the ordinance is in place that tells us how to do it. It came up in discussion, I don't know, four or five years ago. And um, it, it, quite frankly, it works. And I think it's going to work again this year, COVID nineteen or not. Um, and if, if things turn bad with the COVID nineteen, we got to close the beach, that's fine, we'll close the beach. But at least the way things are looking now and the way it's being predicted and the modeling that the governor is showing is that we will be able to open the beach and we will be able to social distance. And Barrington residents will be able to use the beach for its intended purpose.
And my guess is if you, uh, if you were to decide that you wanted, you were going to more limited, in a more limited way, open the beach. So you blocked off one end of the parking lot or something to reduce the number of people because maybe you saw too many. You would apply the same rule, which is once the open space is blocked up, then you would stop selling um out of town passes. Is that fair?
Correct.
So I don't think, I don't think that we have the ability, I certainly don't have the desire uh to, to prohibit non-residents from using our beach. I think there's a constitutional right to it uh under our state constitution. The question is parking. And we have worked out a parking system where no one from Barrington has ever been turned away. And yet we can make some extra money and welcome some more folks into our town who might spend some money uh at some of our local stores and buy some ice cream and have a meal someday.
One other thing, uh, Mr. President is, and I, Kate may know or you may know, when we built that beach house, was there state money used, D E M grant to build that? I know Phil would know if he's still on.
I can't remember.
And if it, if, if there was state money used in building that, then we are not allowed to not allow other state residents in. We can set the rate, but we're not allowed to turn them away.
I guess I have a question about, you know, I'm not sure if it's a question, but maybe you can help me understand. We're talking about opening the beach. And I think the idea is getting conflicted to some extent. Right now, the beach is physically locked. Whereas for the rest of the year, it had up until March, call it sixteenth, been open. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so we have to distinguish between opening the beach, that is unlocking the gates, and what we think of as a beach opening where we have someone down there checking passes and we have lifeguards and D P W is raking it and things like that. As far as that second piece of opening, that is opening the beach for the summer, in the sense we usually think of it, what, are we on schedule? What are, what are we planning? And I want to get that from unlocking the gates, which is a, a more of a health and, health and safety question.
We're, we're doing our hiring for the lifeguards and the, and the beach attendants. Um, we're moving forward, the open Memorial Day weekend. Typically, we don't open it up Monday through Friday um till after school lets out. Um, we may have to take another look at that this year. First of all, we may have people available to lifeguard, which is problematic at the beginning of the year. And second of all, it may be getting a lot more used during the week since there is no school. Well, there's no attendance at school. They'll be out down there with their Chromebooks doing their distance learning.
So is it fair to say then that from Memorial Day until school gets out, during the weekdays, the beach is functionally open to anyone in the state anyway, because there's no one checking passes?
Correct. No lifeguards, swim at your own risk, and then no one's checking passes except on the weekends until school gets out.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Breyer, is your concern that you don't want to restrict out of state folks from buying passes or that you do want to?
So, so personally, I'm in, I'm in agreement with the, the plan the gym outline, that people from out of town can still buy the passes. It brings in some revenue and we haven't had a problem for residents. Um, what, what I wanted was for the council to discuss that sort of thing. And it's, it's illustrated by the, the comment that if the, if we don't think the, the manager and rec director can manage the beach, then we need a new, then we need new people. It's, we, we don't, we don't need new people, but there are certain things that even though the management task of it is relatively simple, it has a very outsized impact on the perception of the people in town and around town. And the council should be discussing those things because it gives people voice. Instead of having all the decisions handed down, they have the opportunity to weigh in and discuss it. And that's what I'm trying to get to more of. We've had both statewide and townwide, single, a, a single voice in each location determining what is going to happen. And I think as we get closer to passing the end of the urgent period where we're mostly responsive, when we start talking about what we're going to do in the future and planning ahead, that's no longer an emergency decision. It's a decision that needs flexibility. But it's not an emergency if you're talking about what's going to happen three weeks from now. And I just wanted to move more of our decision making back to open meetings and open communication, letting people know what's going to be discussed and decided ahead of time so that we can all feel like we have representative decisions being made. It's not that I disagree with the decisions he's making, it's, it's an issue of process.
Okay.
I think that process is in place.
Let me just say this though first. Aren't we having that discussion now? I just, you, you keep saying, I want to have that discussion, but I'm, we're having that, right? Is there something in addition to this discussion we're having that you're talking about? I don't understand.
No, no, we are having the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just going to say that, you know, the, the beach parking ordinance was set by the council. I mean, the council, the ordinance is put in place by the council. And so as far as out of town residents or in town residents and, and the price of the parking, that's all part of the ordinance that the town council has made a decision on and can change it, you know, as they choose to fit.
Right, but as we approach the end of May, I, I, I would feel that under the emergency declaration, the town manager would be able to make the decision, you know what, to help with social distancing, we're not going to sell out of town passes. And I think that would be within your realm of responsibilities as the town manager to do. And I would disagree with that happening and I would also disagree with it happening without the council discussing it.
So um, my view, and Mike or Silla, I appreciate your thoughts on that. This, the um, the decision arrived after, and there were a lot of people who uh seemed to oppose it. The decision to uh charge for out of town residents, is that an ordinance? I remember making the decision, I can't remember whether it's an ordinance.
I, I believe it is an ordinance and so that would be a legislative matter that town manager wouldn't be able to change.
Right, so we haven't granted that authority either. We haven't granted the authority over the F T M or the authority over ordinances. Um, I think that even if this was a perfectly healthy year and we weren't facing COVID nineteen, I could imagine situations in which the manager made an executive decision not to open the beach on Memorial Day because they didn't have enough lifeguards. So it was going to be swim at your own risk. And in that case, it wouldn't be a discussion of the council. In that case, it's simply a management issue. What you're talking about is a policy issue. And I think we've made that decision several years ago and we haven't given up that authority to the manager.
Okay.
With that understanding, would you, is there anything else?
I moved to adopt uh twenty twenty dash six, an ordinance amendment, oh, that's the wrong one. I moved to adopt twenty twenty dash ten, renewal of declaration of emergency as presented.
Motion made by Counselor Breyer and seconded by uh, who seconded? Vice President Waymouth. Any further discussion? Vice President Waymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyajin?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Uh, that motion passes. Thank you again, Jim, for uh guiding us through this, this storm and continuing to do so. Um, the next item on our agenda is to set the agenda for our next meeting. And there are already two things that we talked about. One of the potential charter changes uh from the school committee that, that uh Counselor Boyajin and I will hopefully meet with them or teleconference with them or something. Um, and um, the other one is the public hearing on the uh ordinance for B V L licenses. Um, and of course, the public hearing on the uh emergency declaration. That will be on the agenda. Um, hopefully, we don't have to renew it. Um, hopefully, things are, are really in a strong downward path and we can see that. Um, but uh, we still all have to keep our fingers crossed. Uh, does anyone else have anything else they'd like to add to the agenda? Counselor Breyer?
Uh, last month, there was public comment from Ken Block. Um, that it, it listed in the minutes proactive discussion initiated by Ken Block's comment to ensure those who may be struggling find ways to make a bad situation worse, find ways not to make a bad situation worse for them via federal help, payroll protection, loans, et cetera. Um, with, that didn't end up on this month's budget. I think maybe next month, if we can have it on, to have the discussion about um, either resources available to people and or things that the town can do um, to help alleviate any uh tax burden for folks that are struggling because of the financial crisis.
Things that the town can do to help financially. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Boyajin?
Um, yeah, I don't even like to broach the topic because just not the way, I don't think we're supposed to operate, but we might have to. Um, I think we need a really comprehensive report and we need it like a week in advance on what the budget approval options are going to be, what they look like. And the other thing is um assuming that the only option presented is collecting, call it the fifth quarter of taxes, whether we can have a projection from Kathy about what that looks like in terms of our contracted expenses, promised debt payments, and whether we need to consider issuance of emergency notes because our authorization to do that will run out June thirty. Um, I don't like, I don't like the sound of it, I'm not advocating for it, but I just need to know if all we do is collect taxes at last year's tax rate without any certainty about state revenue, do we need to issue a note before the end of the fiscal year to cover things or do we not?
I think because we have such a strong fund balance that we would not need to issue notes, T N's, bands or whatever.
And we can, we can sit tight for a quarter, call it. The, the reason I ask is because I know that we, we, we write a, a big pile of checks at the end of the school year, right?
Correct.
But then that's reflected in our fund balance because that's as of June thirty anyway. Is that right?
Correct. That's, that's why we need that money at June thirtieth, because we do our balloon payments for the teachers. We pay off all of our insurance payments to the trusts. We have a lot of upfront, beginning of the year expenses and we.
So the June thirty number of eighteen, nineteen million, that's sort of like, that's our worst? Is that fair to say or no?
Can you repeat that again? We blocked out for a second.
The June thirty number of eighteen or nineteen million in general fund balance, is that kind of our worst case scenario? That's, that's our low point?
Um, yeah, I'd say probably yes, because we're up in the twenties other, other times when the quarters are collective.
And that'll carry us for a quarter without a dollar of revenue if we needed to.
Uh, yes, because we usually take in about, yeah, thirteen, fourteen million a quarter.
Can you get us also a report on, um, I know we're, we've been Can you get us also a report on, I know we've been projecting that we will make a larger debt payment on the school loan in the coming fiscal year? When in, when in the fiscal year is that supposed to be paid?
4.4 million?
Right.
We will be paying that around, around April, I believe.
Okay. So near the end.
I gave you a more definitive answer, but I'm pretty sure it's April.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess what I'm looking for is sort of a cash projection. Like, do we have anything to be concerned about from a cash standpoint?
Cash flow, sure.
Assuming that we can't do anything but collect last year's taxes and then the state revenue is a huge question mark, at least until the end of this month. I think they're having their conference on that now. But if you could roll that out, say like a week in advance of the council meeting, so we can get a handle on it?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Other things, Steve, that we need to take a hard look at, if we do the fifth quarter payment, is our CBAs. And, you know, just because we're in a, holding our tax levy doesn't mean we're not committed. We can, we can certainly discuss it with them. From what I've been told by people who've been dealing with unions for a lot longer than I have, that the opportunities to ask them to hold back on their raises is, is unlikely. So that, that may cause a, a funding concern.
Also, Zero Seabrook will be on the agenda for next month as well. Anything else for the agenda? Okay. This, I think that concludes it. Does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counsel Boyajin makes the motion. Counsel Weymouth, Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Boyajin?
Aye.
Counsel Boyer?
Aye.
Counsel Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good to see you all.
Thanks.